Good evening. I would like to call the board meeting for the Waterloo Community Schools Board of Education to order and ask that you join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, and will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now Esther Williams will read our mission statement.
The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Thank you, Esther. The first item on our agenda tonight is Item A, and this is our Advanced Programs update, and I will invite Sharice Orsman. She's our coordinator of secondary curriculum and advanced programs to the microphone. And I know we also have Dr. Mulholland, too, tonight, so with it, take it away, Sharice.
Great way to start the night.
Good evening.
Hi, board members, good to see you. Well, let's get moving. I think we've got a meeting at Bunker at 7:00, right? Okay, very good. All right, very good. So typically, this honestly works out a little bit better. I like doing the November update to the board. What it allows me to do is pull the data from AP and IB exams, ACTs from last year, but also give you a nice inventory of students that are taking advanced courses this year. So I think in the future, that might just be a recommendation, is to move it from late summer to early fall. Then you get a little bit of both. All right, so I'm gonna go ahead and just read through the summary. High school students in the Waterloo Schools can select from over 90 college options. The 2021 Waterloo Community School District graduates received, get ready for it, $1,322,019 in academic scholarships and college transfer credit. What? Yay Waterloo. In 2020, if you were unaware, both East and West high schools became IB World Schools. The official IB World Authorization of both high schools came after a five-year review of programming, staff development, assessment integrity, and pathway alignment. The Waterloo Schools is proud to call both East and West locations IB World Schools, the only two high schools in the state of Iowa to reach IB World status. Again, Waterloo proud. IB World School Plaques are on display at both buildings, so if you have not seen them, go into the foyer at both East and West, and they are beautiful. So please check those out, we're very proud of that. In addition to IB, Waterloo Schools offers a wide range of advanced learning opportunities for all students, kindergarten through 12th. The Waterloo Community School District's advanced programs have expanded now to offer talent development at the middle school, which boosts our equity, twice-exceptional 2E programming district-wide, and an increase in concurrent, which are community college courses, most of which are Hawkeye Community College, advanced placement or AP, and IB certificate options at both East High and West High. The Waterloo Community School District continues to build up our bilinguistic seal pathway and offers the seal to students who meet the criteria in speaking, reading, and writing in two or more languages. So I'm just going to pull out some notables, but I do have an update for the equity document that's in your handout, because I thought it would make sense to include, even though Jeff Frost is here, and he's the director of the Waterloo Career Center, I thought it would be important to include the equity in that program, too, because there's a significant number of concurrent CTE and liberal arts options at that campus.
Sharice, could you, with your excitement about the IB World Program, could you explain what that is?
So to actually be officially authorized as an IB World School on a world scale, you have to offer it for, you have to go to your fifth year of graduates. And then they look at the integrity of how many students, they look at the integrity of how many, what their assessment percentages are on how they pass, they look at the continuity of our staff, they look at the entry points of our students, because we have pre-IB courses, so we built that pathway. So like that first year, it was a real leap, and now kids are going into the program more prepared, so the number of 4s, 5s, 6s, and 7s has gone up significantly. And that comes from somebody in the world, outside of the United States, somewhere else in the world where they come and do a review of our program. So they come in and they monitor all that, they look through everything that we've done for five years, and not everybody gets IB World Status, just so you know. I can look up the percentage, but it's really lofty, so the fact that we have it at both East and West is a huge win for the Waterloo Schools.
And I just thought for the general public, because they would not know what that is.
Right.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. I'm just gonna talk a little bit about the highlights on the next two pages, and then share the updated equity document, and then allow you to have some questions if you have those. So again, we recovered over $1,322,019 for 2021 graduates. We offer over 90 college options. You can see the breakdown in IB and AP, Hawkeye Concurrent Liberal Arts, which are the ones that I oversee. There are a few Hawkeye Liberal Arts courses at the Career Center, and that's under Jeff Frost's jurisdiction, but I still work with those.
How many are in the actual high school buildings?
Pardon?
How many are just in East and West?
We have 16 total.
But some are at the Career Center, right?
Oh, the ones that are at the Career Center, actually, I didn't bring that document with me, but I think at the Career Center, I have for liberal arts courses, do you mean, or do you mean for concurrent in general?
For, no, for the concurrent liberal arts, how many of the Hawkeye Concurrent are not at the Career Center?
I have, I think, eight or nine at the high schools.
Okay.
And then I think there's five or six at the Career Center. So we have like Human Anatomy and Physiology, and Stacy, I'll share that list with you. I just gave it to the high school counselors. Math for Liberal Arts and Statistics, that's out at the Career Center, and then there's other couple of like Foundations of Education, those are liberal arts courses. So I'll submit that to you, okay Stacy? Yep, I just gave that to the counselors, good question. And then as you can see, World Status at both East and West is a big win. Seventy-six percent of the IB exams were at a four or higher. That's up 54% from last year. We're really proud of that. I'm sure COVID had some, you know, impact, but our kids who finished the IB Diploma Program last year, they just, they really embraced that alternate schedule for return to learn, and they really stayed motivated and kept up with their pacing on alternate days, and that didn't happen in all of our programs. And we were very fortunate, not many of our IB students had to go into the workforce, where other kids who took AP and concurrent classes had to go in the workforce in alternate days in the fall, so they missed out on some of those student-learner outcomes. Okay. Then looking down, let's see, oh, I wanted to note that this year, we have 69 IB students in advanced placement, some of the notables. Twenty-nine percent of the exams were three or higher, savings of about $86,000 in college transfer credit. Oh, IB college transfer credit was almost $100,000. And then the three AP classes that increased their averages were AP Psych, AP US Gov., and AP Physics, in lieu of a COVID year. I thought that was pretty wonderful. And, and then under concurrent, this is a big win for Waterloo Schools. You can see at West Expo and East High School, the Hawkeye Tuition Savings, $521,000 at West High, $17,000 at Expo, and over $213,000 in tuition savings for our East High students last year. That's awesome. That's awesome. Then under concurrent liberal arts, which are the ones that I oversee at the high schools, oh, here it is, Stacy. We have seven classes at East, and we have seven classes at West High School. And then I'm just kind of trying to get the word out to make sure that anytime you look in the Program of Studies for a concurrent course, it has the letter C in the coding, think college, and think C or above. And we're getting more direction on, most of the community colleges and four-year institutes really expect a C or above when we take those classes, so we're just trying to be very open and honest and, and clear in our communication. For our ELP students, we have 669 students flagged as gifted and talented district-wide. 2E students, we have 77 identified as gifted with a disability. Bilinguality Seal, 29 students received the seal last year. And three students tested in two world languages, so they're triliterate. How wonderful for us.
I was gonna ask about that. How, how many are children that were not bilingual to begin with?
Of the, of the three?
I mean, just of the 29 altogether that have received the seal.
Oh, I can break that down. I would say most of them were not.
Cool.
Most of them were not. Nope. And of the three, they did have native language spoken in the home, and we didn't have a Bosnian assessment, but we created a Bosnian portfolio, and we were able to do presentations on the Bosnian language and really honor some of our students who speak that in the home.
That's awesome.
We're pretty proud of that. So those are just some notables, and then on the back, that's the equity in advanced programs. Now, this is what I love, these are all the numbers for this year. I did add the Career Center, so I'm gonna hand that out. I thought, I know that Jeff does, I know Jeff does update in May, but I thought for the purpose of that equity matrix, it might be nice to see where we are with concurrent at the Career Center. Now, just so you know, I pulled these numbers off a tableau, and I only pulled 11th and 12th grade, as far as the district-wide numbers and the race and ethnicity breakdown in that first column. So you can see across those different college courses where we are with our equity. We always try to get as close to the percentage of that race or ethnicity in our district represented in our college classes, so you can see across those four various college programs. Sorry, I didn't get the male/female data for the Career Center yet, I'll get that on there.
How much have this increased from like 2019 year?
I'll go ahead and get that for you, India.
Can you say, you wanna give me that last one?
Sharice, is, would it be correct to say that we have increased this percentage every year, though?
Oh, every year.
That it's, it's always gone up, that's been a focus every year to increase that percentage?
Yeah.
And these could be, a student could be actually in all four categories? You know, like BWCC, concurrent, AP, and IB?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And I just want to briefly mention, as you're looking at, there you go, no problems, hey, it's all good, it's all good. One of the things, as you're looking at the information, I just wanna make sure I give a lot of credit to Sharice and Dr. Mulholland. What you don't know, and not to say that Sharice didn't have this information, but you know, just in my work with consulting and working in other districts, this data is outstanding. This is some of the concerns that I've heard from this community, as far as, you know, where are our, where are numbers of kids of color in our advanced programming or programming in general? I would tell you that there's millions of dollars that I've been a part of, spent in this work and other places, for Sharice and her team, as well as Dr. Mulholland and her leadership leading this work. It's, it's a little bit bigger than we may be giving it credit to because of the numbers. I mean, even as Stephanie was asking me the question just now and before, you know, the information you typically see is in the either zero percentage or a small percentage. To see that number in the teens, obviously, there's more work to do, there's more conversations that we can have, but I don't, I would be remiss to say that this isn't a monumental achievement from the Waterloo Schools in comparison to other districts, and I'm saying that without even incorporating the WCC. The WCC by itself is a huge achievement, but just the AP, IB, sorry, I can remember, IB and concurrent is huge from an equity lens across Iowa right now, so kudos again to Sharice and Dr. Mulholland and her team.
Thank you. I know it may seem like I have less enthusiasm because I'm so used to these numbers, and all of our classes look like Waterloo, and I'm so incredibly proud of it, but I think I'm used to it because we've worked so hard over the years to make sure that this is an open access district, and of our 90 courses, they are open to every single kid. So all we say is, be prepared, know what's expected, have high attendance, and sometimes a pretty hard work ethic, right? But it's open to everyone. We are not excluding any student, and I'm really proud of how much our advanced courses look like our community.
Kingsley, when you make that comparison in other districts, what districts are you comparing?
I'm comparing the UEN districts, so when I've done prior research on this work, and Evan actually, I think Evan reached out to you, Sharice, and asked for these questions, we're putting together the Equity Report and looking at some of this information, that's what I'm looking at. So that's a good question. I'm looking at all Iowa districts, some of them may be rural, so don't have any diversity, so those wouldn't count, but for the UEN districts, which are the Urban Education Networks, which are the top 10 to 15 districts in our state, that's what we look at.
Thank you, thanks for letting people know. Yep.
I would agree with that, too. Last, the last four years, I was on the board for the state of Iowa for Gifted Education for UENs. Our data looks very different from other UENs, very proud of that.
Good, thank you.
I just wanted to say, too, as a parent, there's things that you don't realize that are a benefit. Okay, so like, my son will be graduating from ISU at the end of this year. He switched his major at the, in the middle of his sophomore year. Well, the fact that he had that buffer of those 15 credits going into school, and so he transferred into the School of Business, we didn't have to do a whole nother semester at ISU. So it's, it's, you don't even think about how it's saving money for your kid, you know?
Right, well, and I tell people that all the time, and now that we have, right now, it's gonna be easier for me to start tracking that, but we have students now exiting the Waterloo Schools who are finishing a four-year, in four years or less. So the average is five to five and a half years. People don't realize, that's another $20,000 to $30,000 on the backend, and most kids are not this prepared.
So I had a chance to kind of look through this, you know, today, and the, I like what you did on the IB Diploma Program, but I, I think that we could, I'd like to see the data, you know, for the cohort of kids that are taking AP and/or IB classes who are not in the IB program, and see what their ACTs and GPAs and, you know, how their success rate is, too, because even though they're not in that specific program, we have kids that are taking, you know, high-level classes, you know? You know, if they're taking four or five of these classes a semester, then it'd be interesting to see how they compare to the cohorts that are in the IB program, but also how they're doing in transitioning into their college careers, too, so.
Absolutely. What I can do is just sort of a, a general liberal arts overview of students either taking concurrent liberal arts, AP or IB liberal arts, because we have some students who take combinations.
Right.
So I'll make sure, it's easy for me to pull the IB Diploma Program ACT, because that cohort takes all IB courses, so when I show that as being like the highest, based on that subgroup, that's easy to extract, but I'll go across other college liberal arts courses and pull that.
Yeah, but I figure they're probably, we'll probably see, you know, that we're having some more kids in the cohort having success, too, you know, right in the full program, once they're getting the benefits of these partial portions of the program and portions of the AP program as well.
Yep.
And concurrent, not the concurrent classes as well.
Okay, I'll get that to the board in the next week.
Thank you.
Oh, just one last thing to Jane and to, and to Stephanie and to Sharice. The 2E program, I don't know, unless your kid is in it, you probably don't even know what it means, but it can save a kid. So you have a kid who has these gifts, but has this barrier, and let's just say, it made, it made sixth grade to ninth grade, the, the difference is astounding to what that can do. So bringing it in, it's, even though there aren't a lot of kids who have it, it's integral for those that do. So thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. We really push neurodiverse in this district. Very open-minded district we live in, Waterloo proud. Where's the hashtag? There we go.
When I saw that, I was like, Ms. Sharice, you have to be the first one to do Waterloo proud. You coined it, so.
Very proud.
All right, thank you so much.
Thanks, everyone.
We appreciate the report, and I will look forward to getting the rest of that here in a few days.
Sure.
So, great, thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda then is Exhibit B, this is on page five, and this is National Apprentice Week Proclamation, and I'm gonna invite Jeff Frost, he's our Executive Director of Professional Education Forward. This is for information only. And I don't know, Jeff, do you want me to read it, or you wanna, do I need to read the whole thing?
Well, I think basically, I'm just here to tell you that next week, November 15th through the 21st, is National Apprenticeship Week, and we are a strong supporter of registered apprenticeships, and so it's a proclamation that can be read by somebody at your level, and just, we're proud of our apprenticeships and the businesses we work with.
Can you define a registered apprenticeship for me?
Sure, it's a nationally recognized program through the Department of Labor, where we work with a business and our school, and basically, it allows a student to fast-track into that business at a younger age. There's layers of protection that businesses have by having a registered apprenticeship, instead of bringing in students to just work for them, from OSHA standards and different things there. So it allows them to kind of fast-track and get an earlier start into the apprenticeship tracker, into that manufacturing tracker, whatever route they're gonna go into. There's actually, apprenticeships are in multiple programs all across the spectrum there. Right now, we have one in manufacturing, but we're looking to add multiple more.
How many registered apprenticeships do we have currently?
We currently have 10 students that are part of the Registered Apprenticeship Program.
And is that 10 different organizations, or?
No, there, I think we have three distinct businesses we work with. I believe we have six with John Deere, three with, I think, Crichton, and maybe one with Power Engineering and Manufacturing. I can get the exact, sir.
Those mainly seniors, junior seniors, or?
So in a perfect world, you would start this track, if you really know you want to get into manufacturing or pre-engineering, you would start this track, actually, the, the backloading of it would begin as early as your sophomore year, because we're just building the career development pathways and career counseling programs that Jane's been working hard at for the last few years. We're kind of behind that right now, but we're gonna get caught up real soon, and what we'll do is actually be able to, to fast-track our kids through the program and get them into the programs earlier, so they can get deeper and further along. Right now, I think almost all of them have been actually seniors that have started out into the program and are basically grabbed, or not grabbed, but they're actually taken into the programs typically about their first semester senior year.
This might be a good place to mention, too, that we just had our business partners meeting, when was that? Last week, the week before?
Last, Wednesday the 27th of October.
Okay, Wednesday the 27th, then. We had, I don't know how many businesses, it was a lot, and so we had, a lot of people from the community were out there, and we talked about the, the importance of the partnership with the Waterloo Career Center, but also about opportunity. And then after we did a brief opening, we split out into the service areas, so that, you know, manufacturing and trades went down into one area, and they just had these long conversations about how we can partner together, and internships and apprenticeships and, you know, work-based learning in general was a topic that came up, as well as curriculum and that kind of thing. So, you know, I just think we're always looking for other opportunities to broaden that, so.
What is the diversity of the 10 students? Just out of curiosity.
I believe three, seven are Caucasian, and the rest are, I think the rest are African-American.
And male/female?
Sadly, they're all males.
Okay.
So that is actually one of our biggest goals in Perkins, is recruitment of underrepresented populations, whether that's gender or diversity. That's really kind of the, the next big steps for us in the, in the realm of our, all of our work-based learning and all of our current technical ed programs.
Does your career tech programs have any women leading them? At, at the Career Center? Are they all male?
They are all male.
Well, we do have, it, it, so I'm gonna give you kind of the broad scope, yes, we absolutely have females leading programs, but if you're talking specifically the four trades areas, no, those are all led by males.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I don't know who gets to read, is there, are you gonna read it, or is it good as it is?
I think we're good. Do you want me to read it?
Perfect.
You want me to read it? Okay, I'm gonna read it. So whereas, I'm gonna read it, whereas the Waterloo Community Schools recognizes the urgent need to prepare and maintain an inclusive, diverse, and highly skilled workforce that is capable of meeting the demands of the industry we serve and fortifying our economy. And whereas, Registered Apprenticeship Programs enable employers to develop and train their future workforce while offering career seekers affordable paths to secure high-paying jobs. And whereas, the Waterloo Community Schools recognizes the role of Registered Apprenticeship in expanding opportunities in our workforce that are inclusive of individuals who have been historically underserved, marginalized, and adversely affected by persistent poverty and inequality, thus providing a path for all qualified individuals, including women, youth, people of color, rural communities, justice-involved individuals, and individuals with disabilities, to become apprentices and contribute to America's industries. Now, therefore, I, Dr. Jane Lindeman slash Shaila McNally, Superintendent of Schools of the Waterloo Community Schools, calls upon our business partners to recognize the value of Registered Apprenticeships and to promote industry awareness and expansion during the seventh anniversary of National Apprenticeship Week, November 15th, 2021, through November 21st, 2021. In support, Jane, Dr. Jane Lindeman, Superintendent.
And I know, I mean, there's other, there's other programs that don't fall under the register, that kids do take advantage of, like, yes, my daughter will be doing, getting her CNA through the school, you know? So there are a lot of other opportunities, and a lot of kids that don't fall under the specific bubble, but.
So the broad scope is called work-based learning. So we have job shadowing, internships, quality, quality pre-apprenticeship, which is the nursing program, which would be the CNAs going on and doing work there, and then the next step would be the Registered Apprenticeships. Yes, it's a, it's a broad umbrella under work-based learning.
Wow, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, the next item on our agenda is information from individuals and delegations, and this is an opportunity for those to wish to address the board to do so. I would ask that you please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Mrs. Arndorfer will hold up a yellow card when you have 30 seconds remaining, and a red card when your time has expired, and at that time, I would ask that you, respectfully, I would ask that you conclude your comments. Please keep your comments respectful and constructive, as we are all here with the goal of helping our students. And I would also ask that you avoid criticizing the job performance of specific employees of the district. Personal matters are confidential and must be handled through proper channels, not in this public forum. So finally, this is an opportunity for public comment, but it is generally not a back-and-forth discussion for items that are not on our agenda, but we will certainly, at this time, entertain anyone who wishes to address the board. I ask you to come forward, state your name and address, and your three minutes.
Hi.
Good evening.
My name is Ted Liederman. I've lived here my entire life, except for education in the military. I went to Roosevelt, to Kingsley, West Junior, and I graduated from West High in '63. And I thought the school system was excellent when I went there.
Will you turn the mic on to make sure the little green light?
It is on.
There you go, now you're a little better, thank you.
All right, I'm sorry.
There you go, you're fine.
So basically, basically, I've been looking at the paper and watching that a number of students wished to be educated outside of the Waterloo school system, such as Hudson. So I looked online, and I found publicschoolreview.com, and I don't know if you're familiar with it or not, but the last ranking of the Waterloo school system, there's 330 school districts in Iowa, and Waterloo ranks as 321. So we're in the bottom 10%. I looked at Hudson, which is where some of the students wish to go, and Hudson is ranked at number 54, up in the top 20%. And then I looked at Cedar Falls, and Cedar Falls school system is ranked number 27 under, out of 330, which is in the top 10%. Then I looked on, on the Courier, and I saw that there were candidates for the school board, and they were making suggestions that would, they thought, increase the education capabilities of our students. One of them suggested having uniform temperatures, that the temperature variation in the classroom may be contributing to bad learning. Another one suggested that maybe we should have substitutes for our teachers, because our teachers are under tension, under stress. And so my answers to that is, number one, I worked at Choice Hospital, there were tremendous variations in temperature. I do not feel that variations in temperature make a difference in the learning. I do not feel that variations in temperature make a difference in the learning environment. We did not have air conditioning and we learned well. And 120 years ago, we had one-room schoolrooms with five or six age groups. And they went out and became productive members of community. Number two, to suggest that just teachers are under stress in their job is not true. I mean policemen are under stress, nurses are under stress, physicians are under stress, people who work at Tyson are under stress. So are we to get substitutes for all of these people to decrease their stress level? My thoughts are that we have to look rationally. Where is the problem in our low-level achievement in the Waterloo school system? We received, I believe, $52 million in COVID emergency fund for the school system here in Waterloo. And I think outside of administration and custodian and security and transportation, the intersection primarily is with the teachers and the student. And what I'd like to see is video of the teachers and of the students in our classroom.
And Mr. Liederman, I will say you've hit your three-minute mark. So if you could wrap up your comments, I would appreciate that. And I did give you extra time for the, when I interrupted you about your microphone being on. So if you could just wrap up your comments, that would be great.
How long do I have to wrap up?
Well, you're out of time at this point. We do allow three minutes. So I'll yield you the floor for a few more, but I'm not going to give you another full three.
I don't want a lot of time.
Yeah, yeah, that's why I'm asking just.
Okay, so basically.
Draw your conclusion.
If we could see the teacher, is she getting her points or his points across clearly, understandably? And is he or she inspiring the students in that topic? Looking at the students, are they contributing to a learning situation in the classroom? Are they participating in the learning experience? Or are they interfering with the learning experience? Then when we determine what is the problem, then we have a scientific way, a rational way of fixing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
Okay.
Thank you. And is there anyone else here this evening that wishes to address the board? If so, please come forward. Okay, thank you. Then we'll move on to the next item on our agenda tonight, which is our consent agenda. And it consists of five items. The minutes of the October 25th, 2021 regular board meeting and the October 13th and 20th, 2021 special board meetings. This is item C. Personnel appointments and adjustments, item D. Bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings, which is item E. The West High School JROTC travel to Missouri, which is item F. And the Joint Education Service Agreement between Hawkeye Community College and the Waterloo Schools, which is item G. Could I have a motion to place those items on the table?
So moved.
Thank you, Stacy and Second by India. And board members, are there any items that you wish to have removed from the consent agenda tonight?
D dog.
Item D.
And F fox.
F fox, all right. Then all those in favor of approving items C, E, and G, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to our personnel appointments and adjustments. And the recommended motion here is that the Board of Education approve the personnel items as listed. Thank you, Sue and Jessie with the second and discussion.
Hi, Kingsley. Just kind of, I guess, sorry.
I know, they're real hot tonight.
Looking for, I saw we, you know, there's a lot of new special needs pairs, which is awesome. There's a position, the food service permanent sub, is that going to be housed in a certain building or is that just rotated anywhere in the district?
It's rotated anywhere in the district.
Okay, is it, will we be able to utilize them every day or, I mean, I'm sure we will.
Yeah, it's very similar to actually our AFME positions or for our custodial positions where when we have permanent sub opportunities, we rotate them throughout the day. This is really to help some of our gaps, you know, I think. I think I was listening to a conversation briefly before this board meeting. I mean, I think every workforce is seeing a staff shortage. And so, you know, our workforce is as well, especially for our support staff positions and actually mainly for our support staff positions. And so with that, we're trying to bolster some of the positions themselves to allow for a little bit more consistency for individuals that are interested in those. So we can ensure that we have people to serve food, to make sure that everything is working right from an operations standpoint.
And then with retirement and resignations, is this pretty par for the course this time of the year? To see this many retirements already, is, do a lot of staff make the decision?
You know, I mean, I would say yes and no. You know, I do think, and I don't want to get too far into the weeds in this, but this is a tough year. You know, I think that there are some things coming out of COVID. Even our staff, you know, worked incredibly hard throughout the year. And we're here for the majority, if not all the year last year. You know, behaviors of trauma that we're seeing in students is different. I mean, so there are, there are a lot of, this is actually what I talked about in the Charming Form Care Conference. But there are a lot of things that are happening that our teachers are, teachers or support staff are on the front lines with, that they're making decisions early. Now, I will say though, some of these aren't surprising. You know, some of these are conversations that we've been having for some time that are just coming out on the board agenda right now. And so that's why I say yes and no. But, you know, you are right to question. I mean, it's something that is alert for us as well because, you know, we're trying to figure out what to do because there are some challenges. And there's some unique challenges that I think that our staff, our teachers, our support staff face that other professions don't face. You know, I mean, tell me another job that has, you know, you work with students that are, they're individual people on a regular basis. And you have to teach them to go from point A to point B to point C to point D with all the pressures from the state, with all the pressures from the federal government. I mean, I just think that sometimes our teachers and our staff don't get the credit that they deserve for the amount of time that they have in the building with our students on a regular basis. So I'm not trying to get on a soapbox, I just, you know, I think when we make comparisons with other professions and the work that they do, we don't continually think about teachers and the amount of work they do on a regular basis. So are our teachers making different choices because of some of the things? Yes. Is this over the average? No. Sorry, I took a hold of your question.
No, I liked it.
So I apologize.
And we had more come in than out, so.
Right, correct.
But and I would, I would support with people knowing if they are going to retire, that just gives us more time for preparation. So I appreciate it. I mean, a couple of them I saw on here that I know personally, I'm like, I'm sad to see you go, but I'm glad you let us know early so we can fill your void, you know.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So I think that that's a very positive, that they appreciate their job, but they're giving us the courtesy to know that they're going to be done.
Yeah.
Rightfully so, like Dr. Lindeman.
Yeah, in other districts, they actually pay their staff to let them know ahead of time. And so, you know, kudos to our staff because they truly care about our kids and making sure that they have people in front of them. And so that's never really been an issue for us. Our staff have always been honest and upfront with us when they're getting ready to leave because then we can, again, it's not necessarily that we're going to be able to figure out or do it better than with them, but maybe we can have somebody that can present a different piece of it or something along those lines. So not everybody's replaceable, but we do have to have somebody in front of our kids and they, and they may take it in a different way and a more improved way from that perspective as well.
And you indicated that there, you've been trying to work around people to maybe make it more incentivizing, sort of, you said that, I guess I'm paraphrasing what you said. But is there anything we can do with, like we talked about the last meeting, so many opportunities in that pay range that we can do something to just entice really qualified people to stay? You know, creatively, if we're thinking of outside the box, what we could do for that?
Yeah, and so I haven't talked to the board too explicitly on this. And just for times purposes, you know, we are, we are doing a number of surveys. And so we did an exit survey not too long ago with our people that have let us either via termination or just general, you know, leaving us resignation or retirement. So we have some of that data that we're still pouring into. And we're also doing a retention survey or estate interviews for our teachers between four to 11 years. Because typically we spend a lot of money and time with our first-year teachers or we spend a lot of time on the other end with our, our teachers that have been here for quite some time. But there's a spot right there that we don't spend enough time in. And so we are, that research is happening right now. It's not being done by the district, it's being done by a third party. I will share that information with the board once we have that results tabulated. And then, then we'll work to, work with a, hopefully a team, not only with union members, but other staff members to talk about what are some changes that we can make. We want to make sure that we're doing this collaboratively and not just, you know, the district. So this is going to be exciting.
Good. All right. Thank you, Kingsley. Then all those in favor of approving the personal appointments and adjustments, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to item F, and this is the West High School JROTC trip. And the recommended motion here is that the Board of Education approve travel for West High's JROTC students to compete in a drill meet at Ozark High School. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for me?
Safe travels.
Yeah, thank. All right, then all those in favor of approving the West High JROTC travel to Missouri, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us to item H, which is on page 45. And this is the Career and Technical Education Advocacy Consortium MOU. And the recommended motion here is that the Board of Education approve the Career and Technical Education Advocacy Consortium Memorandum of Understanding. Wow, did Matt write this for me? With the Sioux City Community School District, Des Moines Community Schools, Cedar Rapids Community Schools, and Woodbine Community Schools, effective November 9th, 2021 through June 30th of 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Thanks, Sue, and thanks, Jessie, for the second. And with that, I'll turn it over again to Jeff Frost.
Actually Pam wrote it because.
Oh, Pam wrote it.
She has to rewrite all my work.
Well, it's kind of a tongue twister. Wow.
Yes. So, long story short, which Steph's going to laugh and Stephen King's going to laugh at that because they know that can't ever happen with me. But about a month ago, I was approached by Jim Wagner, who's the superintendent of schools in Woodbine. And he had this idea of putting together a CTE advocacy group. CTE, of course, stands for Career and Technical Education. And the purpose of this really was multiple layers of different stuff. But the first thing he said to me is like, we want to get onboard, large schools, small schools. We want to have urban, rural. We want to have all parts of the state covered, from northeast to southwest to central Iowa with Des Moines. And he says what we're looking for are like-thinking leaders, leading districts that would be part of this. So he contacted me and I said, I think this is a great idea. He actually had identified five major goal areas that this group would initially look at and kind of focus on and kind of try to move the bar forward in these areas here. So the five areas real quickly are future-ready Iowa goals. If you remember, it's actually started under Governor Branstad and now Governor Reynolds. A major focus of her platform is future-ready Iowa. And so we want to support that and actually move it forward and take it deeper in areas of career and technical education. Review Senior Year Plus, which is a, really is the mechanism in the guidance from the state about all things that are concurrent education. The things that Sharice was just talking about with the concurrent classes, the liberal arts, the CTE courses. There are some mechanisms within that that we all kind of feel could be a little bit antiquated that maybe need to be updated, especially around the funding source and how supplemental waiting works within that. So that was one of them. Another one is kind of to review Chapter 12, which deals with the core requirements towards graduation. With that, we're not seeing that the idea of the four English, three science, three social studies, three math need to go away. But what we are looking at, are going to ask for from the legislative branch is kind of some inroads for ultimate, or guided pathways for students. Not every student needs to have the 4-3-3 model. Some of them really could get by with maybe two years of math or three years of English. And so we're just going to ask for some, I would say loosening of Chapter 12 guidance and help us to, you know, really get students on pathways that will get them where they need to with the courses that they need. Another one is incentives for career academies, which obviously would affect us. As a regional institution that now houses 13 high schools in seven different districts, three non-publics, and our own three high schools here in Waterloo, we are a regional institution, whether we want to be or not, which we actually really do, obviously. And we know it's the right thing. But, you know, the CAF grant that we got last year for a million dollars was a great incentive, obviously. But we're looking with this advisory group to really incentivize institutions that are willing to take this risk really and to take on the cost of doing business as a career academy, the Waterloo Career Center. And to incentivize that even at a higher level. And to incentivize that even at a higher level, uh, with some non-tax type revenue sources, maybe tax credits and other things that the, the, the state can do for that. And then the last one is we're looking at creating non-revenue streams, um, for those that support CTE, uh, across the state here. So we have some other models from different states that have this. And we're just kind of looking at, uh, you know, how can we do this? And do a better job of supporting and really taking career and technical education and the vision of what the state has to a higher level and have brought support with that. Um, one other thing I am going to mention here, so I said the big school, small school, rural, urban, um, all corners of the state. The other big thing for us was we really wanted buy-in from both sides of the aisle. So whether you're a Democrat or Republican, we really feel that this is something, no matter where you stand in politics, that this is something that you can actually, um, have buy-in and support for. So that's kind of our goal. Um, if we pass this MOU tonight, we actually are going to start, start with our first meeting on November eighteenth. And what I kind of thought was going to start out as kind of a small meeting, um, with just a few legislators, um, joining this Zoom and, and participating in it, has actually kind of grown exponentially here as, as Des Moines has grabbed their legislative people. And Woodbine has grabbed theirs, and Cedar Rapids has grabbed theirs. And all of a sudden, what we kind of thought would be a small group with a nice little discussion has turned into kind of to a large group that's going to have a great discussion around all things that we're kind of seeking support and, and really more support and guidance on. Um, I can tell you from our region right here, um, Senator Giddens, Representative Timmy Brown-Powers, and Representative Kressig are all going to participate in this, um, meeting that we're having on November eighteenth. So I know Des Moines area has, I think, at least four. And, and the great thing is it does cut across the aisles. Obviously, we're very democratic with our legislative, State House leg- uh, legislators here. Um, but when we look at the, the broad scope of where we're pulling people in from, it really does cut across the aisle, um, Democrat and Republican there. So i- it's really cool. We're going to see where this goes. I have it till June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two. If this is gaining traction and we see some great things happening, I'll probably be, be back here in June sometime asking for an extension of this. Um, I can tell you that, uh, we're going to start with our local and state legislators. Um, but the ultimate vision is to take this to the federal level and, and to see what we can do, uh, if we can make an impact there too. So, um, any questions?
When you come back in, sorry, when you come back in June, would you also be willing to add additional schools? Or are, are these four that we have here only have a career technical education program?
Great question, India, because I kind of asked the same question. I'm like, you know, it's great that us five are onboard, but really, we need to, and, and now we do cover a large swath and have different, you know, the rural, urban thing and all that good stuff. But we really do need to have full impact and support behind this. So really, we see this as kind of the, the, the beginning, the impetus, the start of this. But we do know that it's going to grow. And we do know that it has to have more rural, it has to have more urbans, it has to have more legislative Democratic-leaning counties and districts, more Republican-leaning. We need to have the broad mixture there. So I could absolutely see when this comes back in June, probably, that we would absolutely have more schools tied to this.
Are we going to be engaging any of our partner ed- institutions as well? Like Hawkeye and other community colleges, you know, rural and urban combined? I mean, we have a lot of good urban, but we got some really good rural community colleges that are doing some good CTE stuff as well, so.
So our initial thought was, we're just going to have this first meeting in November eighteenth. We think we're going to probably have a second one right before the legislative session begins in January. So we're going to probably have one again in December. At that point, we would bring the community colleges and our business representatives to have representation on this, this panel, to have, you know, just to give more insight to our legislators of how important the combination and support is needed to take this to, you know, we have great support. The state has absolutely nailed it in, in giving large amounts of money towards career and technical education with Future Ready Iowa. But we do know that there are other avenues and, and means, and, and we do need more support. And, you know, it's kind of, we just need to have all these, um, excuse me, these, uh, entities aligned in, in, in concert there. So that will absolutely happen, um, at our, probably our December meeting.
I, I just really applaud this effort, whoever came up with the idea, because I just see that it could just grow and grow and grow and be even better, like getting, you know, who we have our apprenticeship programs with to meet with the people that Sioux City does. Or, you know, collaborative ideas across the boards of all of our partners where our programs are held. I just think it could just morph into something really big and positive for the entire state. So I, I really am in support of it.
I would agree.
Yeah. Way to go. Anything else for Jeff? All right.
Keep us posted how it's growing and, because I was like, why is it only six months? I think this should be forever, but I mean, I, we can't, but.
I didn't think you'd probably like me bringing in MOU through twenty twenty-five or.
I liked when India said, when you come back in June, when you come back, not if, but when.
Shon return.
So, okay.
Thank you.
All right, then all those in favor of approving the Career and Technical Education Advocacy Consortium MOU, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carries. Don't make me say that one more time. We're going to have to come up with a cute acronym or a catchy acronym, so. All right, uh, the, then that takes us to the last action item on our agenda tonight. This is Exhibit I, and this is the Central Rivers AEA Director District Eight Representative Election. And the recommended motion here is that the Board of Education cast a vote for Brian Burton as the Director District Eight Representative to the Central Rivers Area Education Agency Board of Directors.
So move.
Thank you, Aster, in a second.
Say it.
Thank you, Jesse. Um, so each year, um, Waterloo only has one person that represents this District Eight. And, um, Mr. Burton was the only person who submitted. We did not have, sometimes we've had two or three and they've come to the board meeting. Um, I will say that Brian has done an excellent job. He's done this before. Um, I think his heart's really in it, and obviously he's, he's, he's the one, uh, that, that put his name in the hat. But I would just say, yeah, this is his fourth term, wow. I was going to say, I definitely know that, um, at times there have been more than one. But, um, I really appreciate his time in this because it is important that we have a voice out of Waterloo on this board, so. Anything else on that?
Well, just maybe a little bit about what, what the board does.
Yeah, I can share a little bit. So this is the, um, the Education Board, the Board of Education for Central Rivers. So it's the AEA. Our AEA is, is Central Rivers. It has sixty-three school districts, am I right, Steph? It's something like that, sixty-two, something like that. Um, there's about s- over sixty districts that are represented as part of Central Rivers. Waterloo is one of them, Cedar Falls, um, all the way to Marshalltown, um, Cedar Ra- uh, um, Clear Lake, Mason City, I mean, it's a pretty big area. And so, uh, they have a Board of Education and it's regent off just like our board is. And so there's different regions. And so Brian is actually the representative for, I don't know, does it say which re- District Eight? District Eight, which actually is Waterloo schools and several other area di- um, schools, so. Eight is just Waterloo?
Yep.
Okay, okay, so.
Okay, okay, because it's, it's regent off, okay. So anyway, um, then, and they, they guide the Central Rivers and their decisions and their policies, just like you do.
Their governing board, yeah.
Exactly. Just like this one.
And I think that they meet once a quarter or every other month? I don't think they meet monthly. Um, they do have their, um, they do have their minutes and stuff are posted on their AEA website.
It says four years in length and begins with the first regular meeting December twenty-one.
Okay.
So does the superintendent meet with Brian just to talk about what the board talks about? Or what we should be added or concerns or?
No, their, um, their superintendent would be Sam Miller, um, who is the chief of Central Rivers. And so he, they, he would work with the, their board, just like, um, I would work with this board. And so he reaches out to me often. Sometimes the board members will, but not as often as this, as the chief does.
Okay, so his role relates to what with us, nothing?
No.
Oh.
This is, this is for AEA.
Just AEA, he does nothing with us?
But because they provide services, we're the body that appoints the person.
Okay, so it, so he's our voice or not a voice?
Certainly, he can, absolutely, I, you know, everyone on their board would be a voice for everyone, but they try to reach in it out to make sure that you don't get heavily. I think they have some at-large, um, candidates as well, so yes, yep.
Sorry, I'm just, I'm, I'm curious about this. So if a parent had a concern about AEA services, would they call Brian?
Sure.
There you go. Okay, I'm just trying to find the correlation of this.
Yeah, because he's the representative for all Waterloo schools.
Thank you.
Or, and/or there might be a student that's homeschooled that the AEA would have, you know, an affiliate, or, you know, a jurisdiction over, so.
Thank you.
Yep. And they really, AEA really only has three services. They run the media, they run the, um, media resources, they run special ed, and then educational services, so, ed, ed leadership, yep.
All right, anything further about him or the Director Eight? The Director Eight, maybe?
For him.
For him, yes, so, okay. Then all those in favor of approving the Central Rivers AEA Director District Eight Representative, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That concludes our action items for this evening, and I will turn it over to Dr. Lindeman for her, uh, superintendent's report.
Absolutely. So, um, in the interest of time, I'm going to keep my comments brief. But one of them I wanted to, um, highlight tonight was really that today or tonight, this evening, um, actually, right after this meeting, we kick off our, our parent registration meetings for high school. I think it seems really unusual that we would, um, it, it's probably going to seem unreasonable or un- unusual to parents that we're starting to register our freshmen for high school. So our, our eighth graders talking about freshman, um, year. And so for those parents who have an eighth grader, they will be coming to one of the middle schools or there's a couple other meetings that they can attend. They'll bring their eighth grader with them. We will talk about high school, we'll talk about their ninth grade year, we'll show them a sample schedule. Um, we will talk about the options available. We talked, um, and we threw, so we laid out all of the different options that we have. And, and I would argue that, that Waterloo schools has, has as many options as any, any, um, district. And so I can just read those off tonight. We are heading right after this, um, several of us will be heading to Bunker. And then we will go to Carver tomorrow night. And parents can go to anyone, parents and their eighth grade students can go to any one of these meetings. They're all the same, but a lot of times Bunker parents will. And to go to the Bunker meeting just because that's what they know. So Carver's tomorrow night, um, November ninth. Uh, then Central will be next Tuesday night, and then Hoover will be, uh, Thursday night. So November sixteenth and number eight, uh, November eighteenth, next, um, next week. So Monday, Tuesday this week, Tuesday, Thursday next week. And then we do have a couple other options. Um, sometimes we know parents might want to come in the morning or at lunchtime. And so we do have a couple options on November eleventh, which would just be this Thursday. Parents could come here to this very room at eight o'clock in the morning if they, if that works better into their schedule. Or they could come on, uh, Thursday, November sixteenth, and that one is, um, here in the boardroom as well. So there's an eight o'clock option, there's a noon option, or there's quite a few evening options. And so we're really hoping parents will come. This is what I can promise to parents, if they will come. We know that we have been batting a hundred percent on the parents who come. We give them a little co- comment card and we ask them, the very first question is, you know, did, was this, was this worth your time? One hundred percent of parents say, this is worth my time, one hundred percent. And I cannot think of too many times when you get a hundred percent agreement. So, um, we believe it's worth their time. If you, if you just come, one of the biggest messages that we will share with parents tonight is, do not assume that, um, that freshman year is just a formality that, oh, they'll, you'll just tell them what to take and they'll just take their required classes. There are certain options that they have even as early as their freshman year that will really set them up for options and opportunities later. So, um, I happen to have an eighth grader last year, and he's a freshman this year, and I really looked at it that way too, even as a, as a mom, looking at that, saying, what can we do right now while, while, um, you know, students are going into ninth grade? That will really launch them for whatever it is. You know, Sharice highlighted quite a few things. It might be getting them ready to be able to take, um, international baccalaureate. It could be the WCC classes. Maybe it's getting them ready for a registered apprenticeship. Their classes matter. So when they li- sign up in, in, um, ninth grade, it really does matter what they take later on. So this is high school registration, but we're starting with our eighth graders. And again, I know it seems super early for our parents to be coming in November to talk about that. But it really does take, you know, three to four months before we can get this all ready to go. So, um, we'll release schedules in June and parents can kind of look at it at that point in time. But that is our, that's our biggest thing, so that's the thing I'm going to choose to highlight tonight.
Awesome. Get your tails there.
Yep.
Go.
Seven o'clock.
Yep. Set your student up for success in high school, it's a big deal, so. All right, board, I will, I'm going to start down here to my right tonight with Stacy.
Um, I just wanted to thank everybody who came to the meeting tonight. It's really nice to have people in, in the boardroom, um, and to our speaker. Um, we appreciate hearing everything you say and having, um, knowing that everyone here is concerned about what we're doing bec- and keeping us on our toes because what we do is important and we're your voices. I also wanted to congratulate, uh, all of the candidates who were elected, uh, in the election and those who weren't, because it takes a lot to throw your hat out there. So, um, congratulations to everybody. And, uh, I think that's it.
All right, thanks. Aster?
Um, I'll keep it short as well. Uh, I think today is the start of, uh, winter sports season for the high schoolers. So, uh, best wishes to, uh, those teams that'll be participating this winter season. Um, and also, um, I think that's it. Yep, that's it.
You don't have to keep it brief.
Keep it short, yeah.
I'm not, I'm not timing you.
You're trying to get out of here at sixteen.
Okay, okay, okay. All right, Sue.
Well, I just wanted to thank everyone that, um, participated in, uh, the survey for the new superintendent for the district that did close, um, last night. I was thinking it was tonight, but last night. And that input is very important. We look at that, we're going to get it tabulated, and, um, there are focus groups coming up. And I'll let someone more in the know on the date and times of the focus groups. But, um, we just really do appreciate public opinion because we, um, we are here and we need input from you that are in a different role. So I appreciate for all the people that did, um, turn that in and fill it out and just help us in our search as we look for a new superintendent. Um, I also just wanted to give a couple shout-outs tonight for, um, just the importance of, um, people within our district. And I saw, um, a Facebook post from a parent about the West High volleyball coach, and that's Ashley Baranova. And the mother said that she made the daughter's year, that it made her want to go to school. And her daughter was the manager of the team, she wasn't even a player. But, so the impact that our staff has on students is just tremendous. And, and personally, in the IT department at our help desk here, I have to call often because I'm not real techie. And Lori Cooper is like the kindest, the nicest person to help. So if staff ever has any problems, call Lori Cooper because she's really good. Yeah. But I just told her, I really did appreciate her help, and she just walked me through like, not even raising her voice once, and, and it, it was very, very nice because I am a very impatient learner, so. Um, but again, and, um, I just want kids to finish strong here. They've got, you know, just two more months left in the semester, so the year is going fast. So, um, work hard, stay focused, and be safe on the roads.
Jesse, sorry.
Yep, no, I was saying, I'll have to tend to last minute, it's not time for work. But, um, I would have mentioned this then, so I don't know if anybody else did already. But, um, I want to thank, particularly Dan Huff and ADs and the people that supported the, uh, seventy-two, seventy-two event for Dan Gable.
Yeah.
That was, uh, uh, you know, we got a chance to stop in out there before I left town. And it was, uh, getting a chance to go down to the museum on Saturday. And I know, you know, Dan put a lot of work, you know, behind the scenes and tried to make it successful for us, you know, support the, our alumni here and stuff. So I appreciate his efforts and the ADs that, you know, also helped as well, so.
India?
Uh, my question for tonight is that obviously this week we have the, um, hundred employee mandate. So just for parents and students and staff, where, where are we with that? I know that you guys are meeting.
Yeah, that's a great question. So the only thing we can tell you right now is we are, um, you know, we, we had a meeting internally to kind of talk through how we would go about, you know, finding. Yeah, that's a great question. So the only thing we can tell you right now is we are, you know, we had a meeting internally to kind of talk through how we would go about, you know, finding out exactly who's vaccinated, who is not, and, you know, how to proceed with that. And really trying to gather information from other organizations. I believe, was it today, the Fifth Circuit, was it today? I believe it was this morning, yeah. The Fifth Circuit issued a stay on that ruling, so right now that ruling is not in place until they do an expedited hearing, so, or expedited appeal on that. So right now, we are nowhere, as far as implementing it, as far as implementing it. Now, that being said, we're still gonna continue to do our work behind the scenes, because what we wouldn't want to do is to just sit and wait and say, well, we don't know how it's gonna rule, so we'll make our decisions then. So we're just continuing to have conversations with other organizations. I did notice that there are quite a few organizations that are starting to put out some guidance. Iowa, IASB put something out, School Administrators Iowa put something out, UENs are starting to talk about it. So we'll get some guidance on that, but right now the law is in a stay-put situation after the Fifth Circuit ruling today.
Kingsley, just remind the public, because I've had this question asked quite a number of times, about approximately how many of our teachers are vaccinated at this point?
Yeah, we were at seventy percent at the time, and that was over a year ago, you know, and staff, you know, that was just them reporting to us, and so there's many staff that have talked to us that have since got the vaccine. And so, you know, and I would say the feedback that we got when I sent the initial communication out about the federal government's potential mandate was, when I say minimal, I only got two responses. So I do think that is not as much of an issue with our staff as it may be with others, but there won't be some, that doesn't mean there won't be some challenges and some things that we have to work through from that perspective. But I would say, you know, just in the conversations that I've had in conjunction with UniPoint, I mean, when I say conjunction, they don't share that information with us. We believe we're on eighty percent, if not higher, at this point.
Thank you for sharing that. Appreciate it.
Is that all staff or just students, or just teachers?
That's all staff, and that actually includes, you know, some of our community partners as well. And so when I think about the Y, Boys and Girls Club and some other organizations, we also allowed them, UNI, Unique, we also allowed them participate in this program because they work in our schools, and that was one of the directives. And so it incorporates a lot more than just our staff.
Okay, anything else on that? All right, so just for our public's knowledge, we do not have a second meeting in November because that next meeting would have been the week of Thanksgiving. So the next time we will be meeting is December thirteenth at five o'clock, and there being no further information to come before the board, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, second. All right, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you. Good night. Be well.
We are adjourned.